Hello?
There you go.
There you go. Good morning, President Clark, members of City Council. I'm Commissioner Lisa Dealey, Chairwoman of the City Commissioners. Joining me today are Commissioners Al Schmidt and our newest colleague, Commissioner Omar Sebier, Deputy Commissioners Nick Custodio, Seth Kustin, Engeneers, and Budget Officer Lisa Coleman. I have provided written testimony on the Office of the City Commissioners fiscal year 2021 operating budget. To summarize, the proposed fiscal year 2021 general fund budget totals $12,229,691, which funds our department at fiscal year 20 levels. This is a decrease of $10,248,844 from our original proposed budget. The last fiscal year, we have had significant increases in our operating costs, primarily due to the recent passage of Act 77 of 2019 and Act 12 of 2020, the continued work associated with implementing a new voting system and the increased workload due to the presidential general election occurring in the second quarter of fiscal year 21. We understand that the newly proposed budget is a COVID budget and that the city is unsure of what revenue will look like and what financial resources will be coming from the state and federal governments, but please know that the cost of running elections has dramatically increased and will likely not have funds to make it through fiscal year 21. Therefore, we would like to ask that you please consider revisiting our budget in the first or second quarter of FY 21 when more information about the city's fiscal health is known. The new law creates an entirely new and separate method of voting. While in many ways it is similar to absentee voting, it is legally distinct. Voters can apply for a mail-in ballot without providing a reason or excuse. It was fortuitous that this is available now during this pandemic as it offers voters an opportunity to exercise their right to vote from the safety of their own homes. To further allow for voters to stay home, we provided prepaid return postage so they do not have to go out and buy stamps. The deadline to apply for an absentee or mail-in ballot is today at 5:00 p.m. So far, we have processed 206,276 absentee and mail-in applications. For comparison purposes, we received 16,101 applications for the 2012 general, 15,887 for the 2016 general, and 5,742 for the 2016 primary. I would like to thank Council President Clark and all the members of council who worked with us to provide radio ads to promote the vote by mail option for the primary. The over 30 times increase in applications from four years ago has exceeded what our staff can do on their own, but thanks to additional staffing assistance from council, the county administration, the First Judicial District, the Parking Authority, the sheriff, the controller, and the district attorney, we have been able to keep up with the demand. However, if there is a fall COVID spike, applications for the general election might exceed 400,000 to 500,000, and we will have to explore ways to process them timely. In addition to the mail, we have set up a ballot drop box outside our City Hall office and are working with district council members for primary day drop-off locations in each council district. This is all in an effort to get as many ballots returned to us by the 8:00 p.m. June 2nd deadline. We also had to consolidate the polling places for the June 2 primary. Instead of 831 polling places we had last November, we will have 190 locations on June the 2nd. We will be sending a postcard to every voter's household with their polling location, as we'll run a newspaper this week, and our polling place finder app on our website has been updated. Voters who choose to vote in person can go to pollingplaces.philadelphiavotes.com, type in their address to find their polling place. In addition to the additional expenses due to Act 77 and Act 12, implementation of a new voting system has added significant ongoing costs to our budget in material, shipping, and labor costs. For instance, just the new paper ballots cost us $190,000 a year. The process to get those paper ballots returned at the end of the night requires renting 150 vehicles and engaging personnel in multiple city departments, something that we did not have to do with the old DRE machines. The new voting equipment has more involved pre-election testing and takes longer to complete and ship than the old Donahue voting machines, so it requires additional staff at the warehouse. They ship in a different manner than the Donahue's, so our shipping costs have increased. That was a big change from the last fiscal year. We had a successful rollout of the new voting system with the voter verifiable paper ballot. This success was thanks to the hard work of hundreds of city employees across multiple city departments. Leading up to last year's general election, our department trained thousands of poll workers, held over 800 educational events, and communicated with thousands of Philadelphians so that citizens of Philadelphia could be prepared as possible to transition to the new paper-based voting system. I know there were some who questioned the rush to debate, to debut this new system in November, but we were very fortunate that we did. Imagine the chaos of trying to implement a new voting system in a presidential year and during a pandemic. During these unprecedented times, managing a presidential election year in the midst of a global pandemic, we are committed to protecting and supporting the votes of every citizen of Philadelphia. We appreciate this opportunity to present our testimony and are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Realizing your timeframe, we're going to try to get you out of here as quick as possible. Do we have a couple of quick questions? One, want to get a sense of your ability to conclude all aspects of what we're doing, i.e. get the applications in time and understanding the deadline, and being able to get the ballots back out, because I'm understanding there's a lag between the applications and the ballot actually being sent to the individual, then subsequently that individual having it in now the drop box, and thank you for adding that feature. And the other question is, leading up to November, which is clearly a very, very important election, and we don't have to say why, what would you need in place to ensure that we have a seamless transition to that particular election, given the additional likelihood of there will be probably twice as many people voting in November?
Thank you, Council President. So as of the close of business yesterday, every ballot was ready to go out to the voters. We had, everything was complete up to close of business yesterday. As we speak today, we are waiting for the mail delivery, which we anticipate will have, get hit with a lot of additional paper applications, and with the additional help that the other departments have provided us, we are confident to get those applications processed and those ballots out by tomorrow. We are putting the ballot box out front of City Hall and making more opportunity for voters to drop off their voted ballots will increase the number of ballots we get back significantly as people take advantage of that opportunity. As we look to November, we really are, we are seeing right now the many challenges that we're going to have. In addition, we hope to have, to be able to fulfill our complement of staff, which was part of our preparation for Act 77, which we did not get to fulfill. And also, it is our hope that this health crisis eases up on our ability to provide in-person ballot access for people 50 days before the November election so that people can be present earlier and apply for their ballots earlier, which would hopefully give us, take a little pressure off of us to apply for all these paper ballots all at one time.
All right, and one last question. Assuming that if we successfully move to phase yellow, I guess in a week and a half, then we're in a position to continue to move towards whatever phase. Will that possibly free up additional locations for voting machines so we don't have to consolidate those from 800 to 200? My assumption is that a lot of these consolidations were based on availability of the traditional polling places, so is it likely that we'll be able to change that whole scenario?
Yes, Council President. Precisely, we had to consolidate our polling locations due to the availability of a lot of the locations that we typically use because we are in a shutdown. And in addition, we consolidated because of that shutdown and the risk of the virus. We have not, you know, we lost a lot of our poll workers, but we are as hopeful as everybody, I think, on this call that we will be able to stand up an election in a familiar way that Philadelphians are used to come November.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for all the work you've been doing in trying to get information out for people to do mail-in voting. I know the City Commissioners' office received dollars from Governor Wolf. I'm curious, in reference to conversation you've been having with some of your other county commissioners, that in the fall, because there'd be a much more increased importance in number of people voting in the fall, if there's been any thoughts in reference to reaching out to the governor's office requesting additional dollars, because of the possibility of having a second wave, as well as increased number of people voting, I know it's been a significant strain on people to volunteer, but I'm curious if there's been any outreach in that regard.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to let Deputy Commissioner Nick Custodio answer the budget question on what we've gotten, but for the record, we really haven't gotten any additional money from the state. We did get matching dollars in the grants from the state, but no specific increase from the state for any resources. Nick?
Thank you, Councilman, for the question. We have received about $825,000 in election security grants passed through the state from the federal government, about three quarters of a million dollars in CARES Act funding passed through the state from the federal government. We are constantly lobbying the State House, the State Senate, and the Governor's Office for additional state funds. The amount of money that has cost us to run an election in the last year from mandates from the state vote from the new voting system and Act 77 and Act 12 have raised our costs dramatically, and we're not the only county in the Commonwealth that is also seeing this. You know, the state needs to step up and provide more funding down to the counties for elections. You know, all of that costs have increased.
Thank you, Nick. I'll close with this. I know the County Commission Association of Pennsylvania have been really concerned about this issue. It may make sense sometime, once we get past the election, all the ballots accounted for some type of analysis done regarding the counties across the Commonwealth, and then reaching back out to Governor Wolf in reference to that request for additional money. I know they're doing an interim or half-year budget, so that may be, that may make sense considering how many more people will come out in the fall. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson.
Good morning. Thank you so much, Council President, and thank you so much to the Commissioners for all of your work and for your partnership in helping us get the word out to our constituents with all the information you have provided, but also prior to COVID, for your partnership with my office and ensuring that we can take the new election system out to all the faith-based organizations on a weekly basis. But I have a very quick question relative to vote-by-mail applications. How much would it cost to mail vote-by-mail applications to every voter in the city to make sure they can vote? How much would that cost your office?
I'm going to ask Nick Custodio to answer that question.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The cost would likely be over a million dollars in just postage and printing alone, but then you're looking at additional staffing costs. One paper application takes about seven times longer for an office to process than an online application, so if we were looking to mail a paper application to over a million registered voters, we would need a significant increase in the number of staff and a whole other office space for us to use, either on a temporary basis or on an ongoing basis. Otherwise, we would risk not being able to process all of those applications in time to get everyone their ballots.
Okay, thank you. So would you say it's closer to the 1 million or closer to 2 million?
Overall, once you start going to the additional costs beyond postage and printing, you're probably all looking closer to, you know, the 2 million mark. Then you start talking about office space, you're talking about staff, either temporary staff or permanent staff, overtime, shore terminals, equipment, that kind of stuff, you start looking closer to the 2 million mark.
Sure. And then quickly, if you could just talk about your plan for processing all of the ballots on Election Day, since we've received at this point 206,276. How long do you think that would take? That's my last question, and I just wanted to say thank you to Donna in your office, Commissioner Dealey, and Jenae in Commissioner Sebier's office for all of your assistance with processing the folks that we sent to your office. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We are not going to be starting processing the applications on Election Day. There is a staffing component of that, that we don't have the staff to begin processing on Election Day. We are going to start processing immediately on Wednesday. Let's go start with a review of the returned ballots, opening them, and then beginning to scan. Overall, it may, you know, it may take up to a week to process them all, and also please keep in mind that the mail-in overseas ballots are not due back to us until the ninth. At the very least, we're not even getting all of our ballots back until the ninth.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gottiere.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for all of your hard work in making sure that this election goes well. Given the speculation that we could have a potential second wave of this virus, what is the likelihood that we could send the actual ballots to every voter to ensure that everyone can vote safely and that they don't have to risk their health to participate in our election?
Thank you, Councilwoman. Right now, that would require a change in the state law for us to be able to mail ballots to every voter in Philadelphia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you, Council President. First, let me start too by saying a special thank you to all of our Commissioners, Dealey, Sebier, Schmidt, for all of the work that you have done. I mean, you guys were thrown into this, it was baptism by fire, and you've done everything that you could, possibly could, to rise to the occasion. I want to commend you along with your teams, because we've been calling, but when we call, you've been answering, so I want to say thank you. I want to start with this. Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson already asked the question about potentially mailing the applications with postage prepaid in the fall. Councilwoman Gaultier just asked the question about mailing the ballots and what that would take. With that being said, I've got to ask you, because I've communicated to you on numerous occasions, it is impossible for anyone to look at the number of vote-by-mail applications that the city of Philadelphia has received and not look through them through a disparity lens, and when I say disparity lens, I'm talking about across the board. I'm talking about social and economic status, I'm talking about race, and then this digital divide that are relative to technology that is all of a sudden swept across the city. It's dinging us in public education with the number of students that are getting access to online education, it's dinging small businesses that didn't have the technical capacity to apply for applications, and now it's dinging voters, right, who may not, one, be as savvy relative to technical use and/or have immediate access to the technology at hand. With that being said, I want to ask you, what innovative and creative strategies do you think that we will be able to come up with between now and the general, similar to the pickup locations that we are doing now, and thank you so much for that one per council district? Will we now partner with city facilities to allow people to go to different places to, you know, apply for a vote-by-mail application? I don't know what the answer is, but I'm putting it out there because we can't, can't be satisfied with the number. There are African-American communities that have traditionally had extremely high turnout, and when you look at the percentage of vote-by-mail applications that have been sent in, the numbers are alarming. So I'm just raising a red flag to say we've got to get through this primary, and you've done everything you can, and we're here to partner with you and go to battle with you for more resources, but we have to have a strategy to address these disparities. And any comments you have and how we can help, not us telling you what you should be doing, but you telling us what's the best way you think City Council can assist you in this matter.
Thank you, Councilwoman Parker. Commissioner Sebier?
Hello? Can y'all hear me? Can everybody hear me?
I hear you, sir.
Yes, I can hear you.
Yes, so we've been working on this community outreach plan. We definitely want to take out radio ads with African-American outlets and of course African-American newspapers such as the Philadelphia Sun, the Tribune, a lot of various community organizations, and we also want to do geofencing to target areas which are primarily areas where we see people are not applying, and we can have different stations on social media platforms, because a lot of the social media platforms has been a vehicle by Washington DC to disseminate negative information about voting. So a lot of people are going to trust the information, there's misinformation, for example, they're telling people that felon standing, things like that. So there's a lot of negative information that's being paid for in Washington DC and understanding of Russian interference. So we have to, we need resources for television commercials, radio commercials, and geofencing, and we also need to hire, you know, people from the community to disseminate the information and be trusted messages that people trust inside the African-American and Latino community about the voting process.
Well, Commissioner, listen, I want to say thank you for that response. I would ask that, as you all work as a team to develop the strategy for the fall, along with the strategy for how we will select, like what polling places, if we do have a second wave, what polling places will be selected, please feel free to use us, council members, all the elected, our COs, so that we can have some sort of voice or recommendations that we can provide to you in advance of your work, but I want to say thank you to each and every one of you for the awesome job that you have done during this time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gill.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. I want to echo my colleagues all who have thanked you for being so receptive on the phone, for being available and answering all the questions that I've been texting at all hours and weekends. We really, really appreciate it. I had a couple of very quick questions. One, there have been a number of constituents who have reached out about that they failed to put in their mail-in ballot accurately, so for example, they failed to use the security envelope. Do we know what actually happens when those, like when they, you're, right now, you're running right up against the deadline? So like, you know, if you see those kinds of ballots come in, are those then invalidated? Like, for example, they can't request a new, they could request a new ballot today, they've had time to do that, but are their ballots then invalidated, and would they be informed of that?
Thank you, Councilwoman. We are getting the ballots in, in the envelopes. We don't open those envelopes until, you know, until we start the count, so if a voter realizes that they made that mistake, they certainly can ask for a replacement ballot. But if, if we get a ballot that, as long as, you know, it has been my experience with elections that if, as long as the intent of the voter is clear and the security of the envelope is intact, the vote will be counted.
Okay, thank you very much. And I assume that, are there plans to have a more public accounting for how the June primary went? Like, will there be a larger kind of like grouping, or will you do that mostly within the context of your commissioner hearings and public meetings?
Yeah, it is, it is my intention, because this was such a unique election cycle, and with the many layers and the many challenges that we've witnessed at every turn, to have like a debrief so that we can take stock of the decisions that we made that were good and the decisions that we made that maybe weren't so good, where we could improve. And certainly, we will look to all of our colleagues in council to help us in the event that we would have to do this again in November, we will do it armed with the knowledge that we take with us from June 2.
Exactly. Thank you very much, Commissioner. And then my last question would be, you know, you have a marginal increase, I think there was something like a million-dollar allotment or something that barely covers some of the needs that you have going on. You are not only, you know, this budget session not only covers the November 2020 election, which is highly critical, but also the following May primary. Do you, what are things that you think will or will not get done, you know, with the current budget that you've got going on right now?
I mean, quite frankly, with the current budget that we have going on right now, we would be in danger of not being able to have the November election stand up.
Understood and heard loud and clear. Okay, thank you very much, Commissioners, and we really appreciate all the work that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Good morning, good morning. How are you, Commissioner?
Great, thank you.
Good, good. You know, I just have a statement and a question, and I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to rewind a little bit, because last year at this time, there was a lot of criticism for the Commissioners, for the machines that were chosen, and that criticism, in my opinion, was really misplaced. I thought that the focus really should have been, and still should be, in light of the situation that we're in now, the focus really should have been on a statewide process and selection, and I think that questions, confusion, issues across the board could have been handled, you know, just across county lines, no matter what part of the Commonwealth that you're in, and so I just really wanted to state that again, that, you know, I think that the machines themselves were not the issue, the issue was really the process, and that we should have been able to rely on Harrisburg to really help us, you know, help the entire Commonwealth in terms of making a selection. But now, here we are, and as we get ready for next week, I've heard a couple of different, my question is, was asked a couple of different ways, but I'm not really sure that I got the answer I was looking for, and the question really is, you know, post-June 2, you know, a strategy to avoid the onslaught of mail-in ballots. So just, you know, from your earlier statement, you suggested that you thought that come November, you know, we might have an onslaught of these ballots. Is there a strategy, does that rely, does that rely primarily on, you know, the budget that you all receive, or an increase in the budget from the government, from the state, or how do we avoid an onslaught? I guess is really what my question is.
Well, thank you for your question, and thank you for your support with regards to the machine selection and the process. We're hoping that as we approach November, we will go to, we will go to green as a county, and then we'll be able to roll out Act 77 in the way that it was meant to be, meant to be implemented. So that would give communities the opportunity to vote early in a way, because they could go to, they can come and apply for a no-excuse mail-in ballot and get that ballot on the spot. because they could go to, they can come and apply for a no-excuse mail-in ballot and get that ballot on the spot and vote. And that hopefully will take the burden away from having all the mail-in ballots come in, you know, through the postal service all at once. And that would also help with Councilwoman Parker's valid concerns and comments, because that would enable us to get into the communities, you know, before election, talk about the opportunity to do a no-excuse mail-in ballot. Talk about the opportunity for voters to vote before Election Day at a, at a early voting center or vote center for mail-in ballots with no excuse. We had started down that road, looking at locations that we could have throughout the city and have people come in, in churches and organizations, bring people in to apply. But unfortunately, the virus, you know, stymied all those plans and efforts. So hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to see Act Seventy-Seven in its full potential. You know, obviously not its fullest potential in such a short timeframe. But hopefully, we'll be able to have some opportunity for voters to vote on a ballot before, you know, the deadline, before racing to get it in the mail. They would be able to do that in person. But that will require resources for state and everything else.
Got you. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Brooks.
Good morning. I want to start by saying I share the sentiments of my colleagues, of the amazing work you guys are doing over there. It has been a pleasure for me and my team to work directly with you on some of the issues that my colleagues brought up around the digital divide and voter suppression and how we can get these applications out to the community. So I have a few questions. I wanted you to be able to talk about any work that's being done to recruit and train younger poll workers, because we know that a large number of our poll workers are senior citizens and populations that are at risk during this pandemic. So is there any plan to reach out to recruit younger people? As well as what adjustments are you considering in preparation for the general election in November? Especially in regards to poll worker recruitment? Hold on one second, sweetheart. And is this cost included in the two million dollar estimate that you mentioned to my colleague Catherine Gilmore Richardson?
Thank you, Councilwoman. So that's a great question, and that has been a passion of mine since being elected, you know, getting the word out to our young people about the importance of voting, getting them to start early, and hopefully be participants in the process as they, as they grow older. We did start a student poll worker program, and that, we piloted it. And now we have the pandemic, so, and the schools are closed, so it's been a little bit of a challenge. But we hope to really roll that out again for the November general election, where we know that we'll have much more interest from our young people in a general election and certainly provide an opportunity for young people, seventeen-year-olds, to work the polls with us on Election Day. I partnered with Vote That John and the school district and other organizations to do all that we can, Millennials in Action and several different organizations and in trying to get young people involved in the process. And now that I have a much younger colleague in Commissioner Schmidt, I mean, and Commissioner Sevier, I'm sure that my colleagues will continue that great work and will get all that we can and do a better job of getting some young people at the polls working for us in November. Because the level of interest is certainly much higher in a presidential, in a general election.
Yeah, I look forward to it.
And the two million dollars that was referenced to Councilwoman, that was just related in regards to mailing everybody an application. That, that doesn't even, we don't, we haven't even talked about Election Day. That's just the application, mailing it, having the applications come back, having to have them all opened and processed, and then a ballot go out. That is, you know, independent of whatever cost would happen in addition to stand up an election.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have one more question. Be quiet one second, please. Can you talk about the app that you created to increase civic engagement with young people? And how's it, has it been successful, and how are you measuring the process? And how would like third-party, independent and more progressive movements be represented in using that app? I thought it was a really good initiative that you guys launched in the beginning. And I just would like to see what it's going to look like moving forward. And that will be the end of my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The app is actually one of the items that we are hoping to be able to fully implement. It was Commissioner Sevier's initiative, and that is part of our budget constraint that we have now with this, this new budget that we had. With our previous budget numbers, we had expected to implement the app and roll it out. We had thought we would roll it out, you know, as soon as possible, but then the virus, and now we have the general election, and now our budget has been drastically cut, making it, you know, a challenge to be able to do that. That's one more thing that, that is the victim of our budget cut at this present moment.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Good morning. Just want to start by echoing the sentiments of my colleagues and commending the Commissioners for the great work they're doing, as well as the opportunity to partner with you on a number of different occasions. I too appreciate all you've done, and I just have a few questions. I know you have to go, so I don't want to be too long. My first question, I just want to start back where my colleague Catherine, Councilmember Catherine Gilmore Richardson spoke to specifically about the two million dollar estimate as it related to mailing everybody a ballot. I'm wondering, from a logistics perspective, and I don't need an actual number, because I, I know you would just be estimating, but from a logistic perspective, I'm wondering your thoughts on if we were to only mail a ballot to people who requested it in a primary and people who actually voted in a primary. So that would maybe limit the number of ballots that we, we send out by possibly in half. If we were to just go for people who already mailed in a ballot and people who already voted. I'm wondering, wondering your thoughts on that, and logistically, do you think that would be a little more feasible for the Commissioner's office to accomplish?
I'm going to call on Nick Custodial to answer that question.
Thank you, Councilwoman. The, the issue is, like the chairman said earlier, state law right now does not allow us to just send a ballot to voters without an application. However, Act Seventy-Seven did have an expansion of the permanent mail-in and absentee lists. So there's a box on both the online and paper applications that voters can check to get onto the permanent list. So all of the voters who applied to be on the permanent list, we automatically mailed a ballot for the November, this November's election immediately at the beginning when we start, when we start mailing. And then in February, go get another application to ask them if they would like to continue to be on the permanent list for next year's elections.
That's amazing. Do you know how many people have signed up so far to be on that list, in a box, maybe?
I, I'm not sure off the top of my head, Councilmember, but I can, I can look it up and follow up with your office afterwards. I know, especially in the beginning, especially with the online, the number was fairly snippy.
Thank you. So real quick, because I know you have to go, I'm wondering, when you set up the early voting centers, do we, approximately, how much does it cost us to set up our early voting center? And do you think that increasing the number of early voting centers leading to the general election would help with some of the logistical issues you have? And after that, I am done. Thank you, and thank you, thank you, Council President, as well, too.
Thank you, Council.
Well, I'm going to answer the second half of that myself, and then I, as far as the cost, I don't really know that we have any estimated cost. If we do, Deputy Custodial will answer. But certainly, I believe that if we are able to have some of these locations throughout the city and various communities, it will give us a unique opportunity to engage with people before Election Day, get people signed up and voted already, and that would have, it could have the potential of drastically limiting the number of paper applications that we get in the mail. As far as the cost, Nick?
Thanks, Councilwoman. I can look up the costs and follow up with your office afterwards. We were doing, we were doing some basic estimates. Basically, there's a staffing and equipment cost. In addition to that, we do have some limitations around the city as far as technology costs with getting locations on a city net, in order to securely connect to the shore network. But I can put together the cost estimates and follow up with your office directly.
Thank you. Thank you again for everything.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Swilla.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Commissioners, and appreciate all the work and effort you guys have put into this. A lot of questions have been asked and answered already. Just a quick question on people who are contacting us for some questions. I know that the phone lines have been busy and it's hard to answer all the questions from the, from the public. But people said that they have received emails or notices that their mail-in ballots have been received and recorded. But then they get another email saying that your ballot has been rejected because of duplication. Is there a way we could get an answer for them on how that works? And if, was it somebody tried to input it twice, or can we just email directly to Nick or you, Lisa?
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, so my office is open every day. We're here. The phones have been a real challenge for us. Just this morning, I had over four hundred voicemails on just my phone in the office. So, and the phones continue to ring, so getting to the voicemails has been a unique team effort with Commissioner Sevier's office staff and my office staff, just calling people back day after day, trying to get all that information. But of course, you can email me, or email Nick, or anybody on my team, and give that information out to any of your constituents who may be calling. There are, there is some issue with a duplicate that may be related to the shore system. And then there are other issues where people may have forgotten that they applied or the time that they applied was so long ago, they forgot, or they didn't think they were going to get their ballots, so they reapplied. All those questions and issues, we're happy to answer. If you just, send me an email, or anybody on my team, we're happy to answer them. But you can give it to us as well.
Okay, yes, thank you, and I appreciate, I know we've been hounding you guys for the last several weeks, and I appreciate your responsiveness and your team's responsiveness. And, you know, not, it's not that always you like the answers you get, but we do get answers from you guys, and that's the most important part. So thank you all for what you're doing, and we'll continue to work with you to get through this.
I will, if I may, Councilman, I'm going to have Nick Custodial address the issue from the technical standpoint so that everybody has the answer, because I know voters are calling about it. Nick?
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. So if you're a constituent, but has that, feel free to follow that outreach to us. Specifically, in the case that you mentioned, where a voter has submitted a vote and has voted already, if they're getting a thing on a duplicate, they should ignore it because the, you know, the vote is counted. They sent a ballot to us. The issue is, if, every time you sign up on the state's website to, you know, you apply on the state's website, it creates a unique record for you. So though your first application was processed correctly, all your subsequent duplicate applications, you'll go email when those are rejected as duplicates. We're only sending one ballot per voter.
Okay, thank, thank you very much.
Good. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you all for your questions, and thank you, Commissioners, for your responses. We're going to let you guys go, so you can get those applications processed. Still waiting for mine in the mail. I understand it's a very, very lengthy process, and I appreciate the fact that we're getting much more significant response than we anticipated, so that's a good thing. So thank you all, and thank you for your testimony. We'll look forward to talking to you after this is all over to see what we can help you do to improve this process. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.